December Board of Education, December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting to order at seven oh one P M. Members present are David, Jennifer Kenny, and Suzy. It's time to move on to the approval of minutes, November twelfth, twenty eighteen, meeting, pages one through four. I'll say that. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the minutes on the November twelfth, twenty eighteen meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Suzy? And move on now to approval of encumbrances.
Front side's pretty short. Three oh six to Dennis Wright, and then three eighteen to Talon Resources. Dennis went to class and got certified for boiler inspection. We're gonna have to pay a hundred dollars per hot water heater to have them inspected, which was gonna be a lot of money. So, we spent six hundred dollars and sent him to class, and now it's only gonna cost us twenty-five dollars per sticker to inspect the hot water heaters, but we are gonna save seventy-five dollars per hot water heater throughout the district. Three oh seven's heel glass and door, that's for replacing the front doors at the elementary school. Firefly computers, those are Chromebooks that we're purchasing with the grant money, so that's a, that's a big...
That's a few, isn't it?
That's a lot.
Yes, it is.
That's their, our reading grant, so we're excited about that. Gravel for the, three twelve is gravel for the kindergarten parking lot. And the C D W government, three nineteen. You know, we've all got the smart boards throughout the district that are starting to get old and outdated and everything. So this is a flat screen, kind of a glorified, glorified smart T V. So, we're gonna start experimenting with some of these and see how we like it, to see if we wanna continue to go with the projector and smart board, or start moving towards the smart TVs, which I think technology-wise, I think that's where it's going. So, that's, we're gonna have one of those. And our main immediate need for this is when we try to do something at the high school for professional development, if we try to go to the commons area to get one set of teachers, we don't have very good setup there. So, that's also on a mobile stand, so we can take it and use it throughout the district. If you want to go over to the encumbrances for the building fund. Seven is for the concrete and the plumbing. Eight is we had, we did buy a building permit. And nine, we built the pad and decided that a salt city is and everything. We went ahead and built a service road, an access road to our pad, so that we don't have to fight with the mud and everything. And we built up over the asphalt track, the blocking track, so we don't damage the blocking track. When we get finished, we can just take the screenings out, and it'll be good. But, that's where we are there. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the encumbrances.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the encumbrances, as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Suzy? Yes. Other financial reports, pages five through eighteen.
You can see on number, page five, we've had a little, we've been running like crazy. And typically, we try to guess up at Hopkins, but we've just had people coming in late at night, leaving early in the morning. And Hopkins has had some pump problems as well. That's caused us to have to use our gas cards more than we typically do. But, like I said, we've been keeping the roads very hot. Okay, go to page six. We started the month with one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Our monthly receipts were seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that gave us total cash of two million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Our warrants were for eight hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-two cents, leaving us with an ending balance of one million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. Less the outstanding warrants gives us total cash available of one million, four hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and ninety, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. We had brought in three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars into building fund and spent thirty-eight fifty, which, so we ended up, we're just under six hundred thousand in our building fund. And got some, finally got some claims and some bills paid in child nutrition, but we're still doing good in child nutrition as well. Any questions there? See. Yes. You can see where we are on payrolls and bills. This year as compared to last year, obviously our payroll's up. And our bills, we're trying to keep down this year with. You can see our November state aid payment, this year compared to last year, we're up about sixty-four thousand dollars, and that's helping to cover our raises. But you can also see the difference in our payroll year-to-date and our state aid payments. It's not intended to cover everything, but our, with payroll being up because of the raises, then our carryover's gonna go down a little more until we start getting local funds, which we'll start getting our ad verum tax this month, and should get a big shot of it in the next forty-five days. So, it's a... We've done a lot of calculations on it, and in all honesty, we pretty much broke even on the pay raises. You can, we can put it all out there, and it will not cover what, what, the additional state money does not cover the raises. But that doesn't include the step increase that we would have to have given anyway. And it doesn't include the additional raises that we gave support that were not required. So when you calculate all of those in, it was a, I mean, you're talking hundreds of dollars, you know, as far as being a clean wash or not. And you always have to keep in mind that our class sizes are small when you compare them to a good portion of the state, especially the urban and suburban areas. They are having twenty-seven and twenty-eight kids in their elementary classrooms, and we don't have that. We're very fortunate. Here you can see, as, as the raises doesn't cover everything, because we're not one hundred percent state aid funded, our cash balance at this point in time compared to other years is a little lower. But, to compensate for that, our total bills for the year are actually down eighty-five thousand dollars from last year. And then our extra payroll, which includes things like tutoring and after-school help as far as grounds and maintenance and stuff like that, our extra payroll is down twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. So, we've cut a hundred and ten thousand off expenses to make sure that we're being sound and get through this first year with the pay raises. Any questions?
Okay.
You still, we cut a hundred and ten thousand, and we're still almost a hundred thousand dollars short from last year?
Wait, but our, our local monies are gonna be up this year because our ad verum. Don't worry, I sat down and had the same conversation with Judy today. But when you look at the end, for instance, and the principals already know, we're not gonna spend two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on textbooks this year like we did last year, you know?
Yeah.
So, we, we ran again this morning, 'cause I'm, I'm just like you, I lived through that. We ran through all the end-of-the-year projections again today, you know, our goal's being to finishing up somewhere around two million like we started.
We're good, I mean, even at one point four, we're still.
I, I know, but...
You know, but I mean, it just...
Hey, December's always nervous, 'cause that's, that's the lowest point for the year, and it's, no one likes that point.
Yeah.
Okay, it's time to move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. B, other comments in accordance with policy P E D dash R, no one present for that. Information items, superintendent's report.
The superintendent's report's just a little bit different. Here's the letter we got from the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Speaking of trying to make ends meet. On November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Oklahoma County District Judge Patricia Parrish entered an order which requires the Oklahoma Tax Commission to withhold future motor vehicle payments collections from a hundred and forty-six school districts and redistribute those amounts withheld to the remaining school districts. The total amount to be withheld from your school district is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. The amounts to be withheld from all school districts can be found in exhibit four dash two. Beginning in January, two thousand and nineteen, and continuing through January, two thousand and twenty, one one-thirteenth of your district's amount will be withheld monthly from your district's motor vehicle collections apportionment, provided the amount of your apportionment equals or exceeds such amount. We get about, give or take, anywhere from four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars a year from motor vehicle. So, it's, the good thing is, this is gonna stretch over two years. And the other thing is, if, you know, y'all can enjoy your low gas prices if you want, but when they're drilling and oil and gas is doing well, they're buying vehicles, and our motor vehicle tax goes up. So, we really kind of win-win-lose deal there when, when gas is low. But, you know, it's gonna be, what, forty-two thousand dollars a year unless we get an increase in that. So, the funny thing, this happened in fifteen and sixteen. According to the, their admission, the tax commission did not distribute the money the way it is written in law. However, they did distribute the money to the schools that had the highest number of students attending at that time on an average daily attendance basis. So, like, there are schools like us that, that was our high year, and so now we're in a low year, a lower year, and they're taking money away, so it's kind of a messed-up deal. And the lawsuit was between some schools that lost money and the tax commission, and there were no schools that were gonna lose money that were ever notified or allowed to present in the lawsuit. So it's kind of an interesting deal. There were no losers in that courthouse that day. There's just a hundred and forty-six of us sitting down here saying, "What happened?" But anyway, it was kind of disappointing. Right after I got this, one of the principals called and said, "Hey, we need three thousand dollar computer program." I said, "Let me tell you why that just happened." That principal said, "Never mind." So, but anyway, it, it could've been worse, but they are, like I said, it's gonna stretch it out over thirteen payments, so it won't hurt as bad. Anyway, I thought you all needed...
That it?
...aware of.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving on now to action topic A, annual reevaluation and consideration of Indian policies and procedures, pages nineteen through twenty.
We did not make any changes. Our, our policies and procedures, along with working with the Choctaw Nation, have been working very well, but we are required to review them every year and to see if there are some changes that someone would like to...
Has anyone suggested changes?
Motion to approve action topic A, consideration of Indian policies and procedures.
One second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the annual reevaluation and consideration of the Indian policies and procedures. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Suzy? Yes. Action topic B, consideration of revision of Sticker Public Schools policies, school wellness, C N and physical fitness, pages twenty-one through thirty-two, and child nutrition procurement, pages thirty-three through forty-four.
These are, this is the second time we've updated these since I've been here, and they both come with the child nutrition audits. And so, the federal government changes what they require us to have in policy. The procurement, uh... Since we don't purchase anything that's not on state contract that's more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it really has no effect on us, because we just, it's so hard to find multiple bidders to bid, and then they change their prices as the year goes on, and you're continually trying to put that stuff out to bid. We just go with the state contract on that anyway, so, but we do need to follow the federal guidelines so that we can get the federal reimbursements for our child nutrition.
That was the changes?
It was already in place. All right, we went from a two-page policy to a fourteen-page policy at the recommendation of the United States Department of Education. We already have a wellness committee, we're gonna go from one meeting to two a year.
And then the forms on the back, are they, that's what, we had to go with that as far as making, getting our bids and...
Yes. The closing.
Yeah. Make a motion that we accept revisions to the policies on our school wellness and our child nutrition procurement.
I'll say that. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept revisions of Sticker Public School policies for the school wellness and physical fitness and child nutrition procurement. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Suzy? Yes. Action top C, consideration of accepting bids on school vehicles suburban.
Suburban or Expedition XL. See, I have, you all have the bids in your pocket. Okay. Have a new Expedition XL for fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars on the pre-owned side. We can get a two thousand seventeen in the thirty thousand mile range for thirty-five thousand. A two thousand eighteen, two, four-by-two XL in the twenty-five mile, twenty-five thousand mile range for forty-eight. Or, we can go with a two thousand nineteen Suburban LS new for, and the bid on that is forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
So the new Suburbans, thirteen thousand dollars cheaper than the Expedition?
Yes, sir. Young Suburban? I like, after leaving eighty-seven thousand dollars this week, I like the price better.
I make a motion, we approve the two thousand nineteen Suburban.
I'll say that.
And I was supposed to go over, did y'all see the mileage on ours?
I looked at it.
We were definitely due, so...
I got them broken in, though.
Yeah, they're broken in, that's for sure.
Motion made...
Go ahead. Are you gonna get rid of these, or keep them?
We'll keep them, we'll keep them.
For short trips.
For short trips, but we'll have that one. And then, you know, we also have pickup that is three-quarter ton, so it's not driven as much, but you know, it's over twenty thousand miles already.
Yes.
So it's, it's amazing, but, but no, we're gonna go ahead and keep what we have right now.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by, oh, you made, oh, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I was looking for one. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the bid for the two thousand nineteen Suburban from Williams. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Suzy?
She's gonna pull that again. I know.
Ready to move on?
Yes, we're just, we've got, she hasn't, we gotta print out the other bid.
For the, oh, okay, that was not on yet. Wait just a moment. Just a second. Okay. Action topic D, consideration of accepting bids on framing package for softball locker room.
I've got this...
Can we do both of those together?
Yeah, as soon as she gets...
Locker room framing?
Yes, but they're, they're separate.
Yeah, well...
So we can go either direction.
Two different, probably four different, let people learn.
Three different bids. Kenny, have you noticed how much time getting bids takes up?
Oh, yeah, I do it every day.
See, I'm not used to doing that.
Yeah, it takes months or longer. Well, the main, you know, because they've gotta figure out, that's why we have to do bids here. But if you can do it hourly, people wanna do that. Because when you bid it, they gotta be able to estimate downtime, you know, things. So it costs more, but, you know, we have to have them here.
I had a question about this one, though. So, is it twenty-one five, or is it zero? Or is he saying that...
Okay. The materials and everything is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and then the labor to frame it out and install the metal and siding and roofing is nine thousand dollars. So, the twenty-one five, I don't know. I saw that first, I thought, oh, I guess he did one.
Yeah. And so this other one, is that just the material?
It's just a, yes.
Okay.
Because if I could get a good price on just the metal building, then I would look at, but all the prices on the material is falling right in line. And we, we done, yes. Our maintenance crew would prefer to go with a wood frame structure, just because if we need to add a door or make some adjustments down the road, it's better for them. But I bid it metal and wood, I don't have a preference personally. But, that's kind of why you'll see the metal and the wood bid as well, and we can go whichever way you all would like to go there.
So Suggs is a wood?
Suggs is a wood, wood frame.
But then Superior's not?
Superior's a metal building and all the, uh, everything that goes with it. And then Mike Bush has bid both a wood frame and a metal frame. And...
Material and lumber is all over this.
And his also has the foam insulation included.
I have a preference on wooders, too.
Now, what I've heard, that wood frame buildings insure better than metal buildings. Something to do with the wind blowing them and something like that, I don't know, I haven't... You know, that's only deal, is that, like I say, you can model some of them.
My only deal was if it's got the wood studs and it's gonna be the girls' dressing room, if you wanna redecorate or something like that, move stuff around, it's a lot easier to do on the wood. But that's, that's not a, it's not a real reason, but it could be.
Yeah.
That was, that was, yes.
I think it's a good point, I mean...
But what about the lockers and stuff like that, what would they attach to, or would they be attached to?
Everything that's gonna have a locker behind it instead of sheet rock, we're gonna do plywood, painted plywood, so that it's there, you know? I know there will never be a softball thrown in there or a bat bouncing, you know? But just in case the visitors accidentally get in there and do that, that'd probably be a pretty good way to go with it, so...
Metal's, you know, probably faster and as far as getting it done quickly. Stand the tresses and weld it all together, and you're done.
Like I said, I don't have a preference, I think that people in his crew would prefer the wood.
Yeah.
But the metal one doesn't have the foaming or the... Yeah, it does, it has foam insulation, nevermind.
No, Suggs doesn't, does it, with the foam?
No, I see things, says that. So the insurance is cheaper on a wood frame?
Well, I, I, I just heard that, I don't know if it's true or not, that's all...
Going the long run, if it's better to go with the wood, because it may be additional, and I think that's the one better to go. If you're looking at the longer run. I'm a wood fan myself, when it comes to smaller.
You know, the metal is quick. You know, you go in there and put up those tresses, they're ten, twelve foot apart, and seat purling on them, and you got a rip on it in two days. Where your wood's not, you know, it's...
That's, that's true.
It's a, you gotta paint, you know, your tresses and... I like wood, though, I mean, as far as...
I'm just scratching, because we just built a building that's a lot smaller than this, and so it's a good price.
Okay, good, okay, good.
We just built it like a twenty-four by thirty, for pretty close to this, you know, which is aggravating. Close to the same size.
Did he build it?
Uh, no. No.
I make a motion, we accept Mike Bush's bid for the wood frame building, nineteen thousand.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the bid for Mike... Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the bid for Mike Bush, um, for the wood frame, uh, package for softball locker room. Uh, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of accepting labor bids for softball, I guess that was all it was. Okay. We, we'll put those together, V D M.
And I'm going to recommend that we table, uh, F, this switch to LED. I have one, the bids are so far apart in price that I've got to go see them. You know, it, there has to be a difference. I mean, it's too, it would be too, way too easy for me to say, let's just go with the cheapest without getting in the car and going and looking to see. Cause when something costs half as much as something else, there's, there's something wrong in the equation and I would just feel a whole lot better. All three companies I've worked with have given us an estimate that, and it's been very consistent that our energy costs are going to go down somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year by going to all LED at the high school and middle school. They all three offer a lease purchase option in which it's basically revenue neutral until it's paid off. So, uh, we can put money down upfront or we can wait six months and accumulate six months worth of savings and make the payment out of that. So I think it's a very positive thing for us to do moving forward, but, uh, I had no idea how hard it was going to be to, I finally had two of them to say, well, you really can't get an apples-to-apples comparison. So, uh, when you go down to every room and every light fixture and try to compare how many watts one company's putting in compared to the other and who's going to replace which fixtures and everything, it's a little, I thought I could have something ready for this board meeting, but I just have not been able to do that.
What I've seen is five dollars to fifty dollars. We're doing our favorite thing, LED. And it's unbelievable the difference, you know. There's so many different shades of that light and, and I mean, it's, you almost have to go to a place that has them installed. You can see the difference because in classroom is going to be different than what we get in the house.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to the schools that these places have been to, we're going to look at them and.
Yeah, it's, it's unbelievable with the price difference.
Cause we're going to, I mean, I can tell you, we're going to spend somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we want to be sure, I don't want to spend that kind of money and no one tell the difference. I mean, other than Jeanette sees that our electric bills are going down, which that's good. But if you're going to invest that, you want to see the quality of.
You know, you can get a two-year bulb or a ten-year bulb, you know.
These are all ten-year. Everything's guaranteed for ten years.
Yeah, we don't have to change light bulbs for it.
No light bulbs and no ballasts, so it'd be a good thing. No buzzing, what will we do to break the silence? So, uh, I would, I would ask that we just table this till next month and I'll have a, a recommendation for some of that.
Motion to table action type?
Yes. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to table the lighting upgrade for the, uh, information for the upgrade for the middle school and high school. Um, switching to LED, um, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Executive session A, proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B of the Open Meeting Act Number One, assessment of the performance of Superintendent Molly Guthrie and discussion of extension of his contract. Motion made to convene?
I make a motion to convene an executive session.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to convene in executive session at seven thirty-six P M. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.